I got all these buttons up here now. Okay. I call this work session to order and wake everybody up.
Yeah.
Could I get an adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand, vote aye.
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 All right, motion passes. We have two items this evening. The first one is Mr. Holder and a budget.
And actually, I'm gonna start off. Mr. Holder will make his way up. We're gonna kind of tag team this. So, this is your financial summary. We're gonna end up talking about the close of this fiscal year and the opening of next fiscal year. Unlike the federal government that goes October 1st to September 30th, we go July 1st to June 30th at the state level and district level. So that's our fiscal year. We just got a couple of days left. So, kind of going through, am I clicking just, okay. So you can kind of see here the reserves we've had over the last decade. But you can see, we were able to increase our reserves dollar-wise, but our percent-wise just went up a little bit, and now it's dropping down. I can tell you that the drop from 23 to 24 is just shy of $5 million, and that is the $5 million we did not receive from tax collections in the 23 assessment year, reassessment year. Because remember, we set the tax rate in September, then many appeals were heard and found and changed before the bills were paid, and that difference was almost $5 million. We will get that at some point, recruitment tax. It might be this September, it might be next September. It depends on when the county gives us the information. So that really, that 76 million really is kind of like an 81 million, which makes it 28% higher. You're gonna see, again, that we're carrying that loss of 4.9 million still. So this year, you're gonna see in a little bit, we're dropping to 26% reserves, and you're gonna see why a lot of it's because we've had a really rough eight days here financially on revenue side. So, first off, I'd kind of give you a little roll down on our rollback, our operating levy rollback. There's 518 public school districts. Only 22 rolled back a dime. We rolled back 65 cents. We're leading the state. And that's on the right. You can see the rest of them in the state and what their rollbacks were. If you look on the left, that's the 12 districts in the county. Only two of us rolled back. And we cannot undo that rollback this coming September. So, just let you know that that 65 cents will carry on. In our reassessment year, you cannot undo your rollback. Here's the 18 districts that have 10,000 or more students in it. And you can see, again, we're very much higher than the rest of them in how much we roll back, and higher than the average, almost double the average when you put all 18 together. Tax rate-wise, here's the 12 districts in the county. We have the lowest tax rate. And I want to point this out because the last couple of years, David Carlson will have a work session with you about salaries later in the fall. We're starting to lose folks to some of those districts on the top of this list because they've given voters a razor levy, or they're not taking the rollbacks like we are. So, give you an example, we had a 15-year veteran choose Raytown over us a few weeks ago because Raytown, Step 15, would pay about $4,000 more than us. Five, 10 years ago, that was not the case. So our neighbors are competing better against us because they've learned they're gonna have to have a higher salary than us, and it's starting to impact us getting our first choice in all cases. You can see, this is the history going back to 2002-03, so 23 years of history here of what the tax rate's been over those 23 years. You can see that operating levies in blue, and it used to be a much higher number than it is now. Then you add the debt service, and then you get the total. When you get the total, it used to be $6.11 there in the middle of the chart, and it's now down to $4.73. You can see the Prop C is a green column. That's gonna be a conversation we have over this course of the next year. We approved a resolution saying we're gonna put it on April ballot. Eventually, we're gonna have a vote to see if we do put it on April ballot. We lose about $4 million a year in Prop C revenue because of that rollback. Again, only about eight districts roll back enough to lose more than $1 million, and we're one of those. And in the very, very far right column, you can see, we didn't have a voluntary rollback until two years ago, and the dollar amount, we're foregoing by having that rollback. So, we were getting all of our voter-approved funds before. We are now at negative 22 million based on what voters had approved and passed. So, I'm just gonna show that piece. This year was really, really, really exciting and good for the first 11 months. There's only 12 months in the fiscal year, and we are a 3.5% increase over prior years, 11 months, both at expenses and revenue. We were very, very excited about that. Then June came. Better yet, June 18th and on came. So the last eight days, we've had five pieces of bad news. So I'm gonna kind of go through each one of those. Number one, on the 18th, we were told, hey, the state, we don't have enough money to pay, fully fund a formula. Even though we said we're gonna fully fund it, we passed the appropriation bill in February to make sure we had enough funds to do it. We've been telling you we're gonna fund it the whole way. We're not. And that's gonna hit us about negative $185,000, Nathan's calculation. So, and that's money we will not get back. So, that's a loss, and it's gonna stay a loss. A lot of these, the rest of these are gonna be not permanent losses. They're just gonna be a loss for this fiscal year we're closing, but a gain in a future year, at least that's what they're telling us. So the first one is through our federal programs department of DUCY. They notified us that they didn't have enough money to pay us for our title programs. So how this works, our title programs, we submit a budget and a plan in 2024, before July 1st. They approve it in July of 2024. And then we spend the money, and then we ask for reimbursements after we spend the money because they promised they would pay it. So that's why we expended it. And then we get the reimbursements. Well, they didn't have enough money for reimbursements because the federal government hasn't given the state the money yet. They're behind in their payments to the state. So the state can't give us what they don't have. And that was about a $680,000 loss. Again, they're saying we should get it in the July to September timeframe. So, in the course of two years, it doesn't matter. But of course, of what looks, our percent reserves is gonna look like on June 30th, it does matter. Bad news number three, basically the same exact thing from a different department in DUCY, and this is special education, IDA Part B. And this one was about $1 billion that they didn't have to pay us. Same type of thing, approved budgets. We expend the money, knowing that they're gonna reimburse us. And in 23 years of being an administrator, they've always reimbursed us. This is the first I've ever seen in these, in both these two funds. So FY '26, we should get this $1 million, is what they're telling us. Bad news number four, doesn't impact FY '25. I put this one last because it was last until yesterday. I almost switched it to make bad news number five, number four, but I didn't want to change the order since I notified you guys these in this order. So we got our allocations for Title I next year, and it is 840,000 less. So we get about a million and a half this year. Again, 680,000 is not here yet. Next year, they're decreasing that by 56%. And the reason why, so how they come up with how much money, first off, they divvy it out by states on their poverty rate. And Missouri's poverty rate, by the calculations, is down compared to their neighbors, even though it's up. It's not up as much as some of their neighbors. So the state's losing about 12.5 million dollars. Now, we've got 2.1% of the kids. So you think 12.5 million dollars, okay, we should get about 2% of that 12.5 million dollar cut. We got a much bigger, we got a six, over 6% of that cut. Why? So they base it on census data. It's actually in ESEA law, Section 1124 and 1125, goes over four ways you can qualify to get title funding. Well, in that title funding, it's based on census data, but you don't have a census but every 10 years. So in the years after that, they predict what your poverty would be based on tax returns. And we can't see those, so we can't see what the formula is saying about tax returns. SNAP, so federal assistance. Well, that depends on people engaging with that. We know they engage it at a lot less rate than they do a free reduced lunch and some other factors. They also kind of guess, estimate your population. So, that drop is a big drop for us because we've already, they usually tell us in early May, that before May 15th, they told us this last week. We've already hired and have our plans, and we have people in place, so we are gonna negative spend in this area and have to re-code things local because we already have services for Westview, Lee Summit Elementary, Meadow Lane, Title I at special, early child, special education buildings, and also our home educators. So, we already have hired folks. So that's a big significant surprise hit. They also have yet to populate Title II or III. I don't know what to tell you about that. We have to submit a budget to DUCY on these things, and we don't, right now, they say $0, and they said they just don't have the allocations yet. So we don't know what the next year will be for that. So I thought that was gonna be the last of the bad news. But before I get to the fifth one, I want to show you just, they're basing that census number on FY '23. So this is not their census data. This is our free reduced lunch rate over the last 15 years. You can see how it was increased and kind of hovered around that 20%. Notice the anomaly of FY '22, I highlighted that there. It dropped because no one had to fill out the form that year, nor did they have to fill out the year before because every kid got free reduced lunch, or free lunch and free breakfast during COVID, during that time. So FY '23, we start collecting the data again. We are now at FY '25 at the highest percent we've ever been. So this school year we just finished, we have more kids qualifying for reduced lunch than ever before. But the census data is two years in a rear. They're predicting what our poverty rates was in '23. So I just want you to remember that. So I think our Title I dollars will pop back up two years from now. So let's look at that census data. The high mark in the last 20 years was 2012 in the census data, when they predicted we have 1,815 families in poverty. Now they're predicting we have 947 families in poverty. That's a 47% drop over that 11-year span. Look at our free reduced lunch data. We went from 3,600 kids to 3,400 kids, a drop, but only a 6% drop. So that's where it's hard for us. We're seeing, this is what we spend the money on, these kids. So this is what's interesting for us, is that we're seeing the need at a higher level than they say we should see the need. But in the two years since then, we've increased 20% in the last two years. Went from 3,400 kids to 4,100 kids in free reduced lunch qualifications. So just letting you know, our need is growing fast. At the same time, our budget's getting cut 56%. So that's a little disheartening. So here's the mystery census data. You see how Columbus is funding just right of the yellow? There are actually four ways you can qualify. We had been qualifying in three of the formulas, now it's just one of the formula. But if you ask what that 947 number is based on, we can't see the data for that. We did, it's a number that comes out of a formula that we are not allowed to see the inputs on. So, and you can see the million and a half this year, down to 663,000, a loss of $840,000. Only nine districts lost 32% or greater of their allocation. We're at 56% out of 554, because this is charter schools too getting impacted by this. So nine out of 554 schools were cut, a third of their funding or more. Only four districts lost a quarter million dollars or more. We're in both those pockets. State, again, lost 12.5 million. You can see St. Louis and us are the biggest carriers of that. So I decided to put this in a perspective on the loss or gain. There were some places, mostly charter schools in the far right, that did gain in Title I from last year to the next year, or the year we just finished to next year. And you can see most of Jackson County, and this does have the, outside of Jackson County, the districts of 10,000 or more that are in our conference. So you think about St. Joe, North Kansas City, Liberty, and Park Hill. It has them in there as well. And you can see, most are close to the same. And even the ones that are losing quite a bit, they're at 19. Lone Jack is the second biggest loss. It's at 19%. We're at 56%. So again, we are, we are an outlier in a formula we have no idea why we're an outlier in. We've called DUCY, and they also say the same thing. They've looked at, they can't tell. They just know it is, and you can't change it. So then, bad news number five came yesterday, and that's early childhood special education payment is being prorated because of, again, they don't have enough funds. Now, early childhood special education is mostly coming from our general revenue state level. So I'm kind of surprised, the email ended saying, but you should get it in July. You know, that is not what they said about the SAT being insured. It's not a case the federal government hasn't given us money. We do get some early childhood special education money through IDEA Part B, or it's actually different parts, IDEA. But vast majority, and what they're talking about here is state general revenue. Good news is, we also had a positive surprise yesterday, and it was bigger than that negative surprise. We got 1.8 million in pilots. Usually, we get our last pilots in March and April, so we were surprised to have some more pilots. Pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. This is when your cities pass tax abatements for certain, you know, Chapter 100s, things like that. So to recap, there's a tranche of money that you're never gonna get that we lost in the last eight days, and that's 185,000. There are four tranches, three of them you lost in the last eight days, one you lost in 2023, that eventually you're gonna get back. 680,000 Title I, a million in Part B, that's just special education, 4.9 million via the recruitment tax, because we lowered our levy based on data, and the data ended up being too high. And so people's bills were less, and our tax rate would have been higher if we'd have known. And then 1.1 million ECSE funds. Again, those three that were, the 681 million and 1.1 million, we are told that we will receive those in the next three months. We will monitor to see if we do. And then we have a potential loss, I shouldn't say potential. We have a loss of 840,000 Title I, and maybe more in Title II, III, Immigration, and III, ELL. So we'll just have to wait and see about those last three. So, we have budgeted, all of them are approved. We spent what we said we were gonna spend, and they haven't reimbursed us what they said they wouldn't reimburse us because they don't have the funds. Our first 11 months, our expenditures and revenue increased at the same rate. We were very excited about that. I think everyone's bought into the zero-based budgeting process, and it's really worked well here. We have time and ability to recapture and change if needed. So our next steps, kind of telling you a little bit. If, right now, we're fully staffed for Title I. If we have an opening, we're gonna not replace that because we have an $840,000 hole there. We will already have to re-code more than half the positions probably to district no longer Title I. If Title I funding drop persists, and I expect it will for two years before it pops back up, you're looking at attrition conversations throughout this year about FY '27. Future budgets could be impacted if this becomes a new trend. Present recruitment tax, once the county gives us the information, we've only done one other one this century, and that was in 2021. We got the information in August of 2021, so we'll see. And then Title II, a allocation, if it doesn't come in, that's over $600,000 that goes to professional development. We'll have to rethink about what we're doing professional development-wise. And then, of course, over the course of this year, you're gonna have Prop C vote rollback conversations. And in the course of next summer and early fall, you'll have conversations about the levy rollback. So you'll have your parts, because those are levers you could pull to make up for things that are not going well state and federal funding-wise. So that was a lot of information. Now Nathan's gonna go over the good news of where we're at in the budget, what next year's budget looks like, and then we'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Very good summary of really what's transpired in the last 10 days. And just to add to that, yesterday morning, I was excited for about five minutes because we got the word that we received the pilot payment. Our accounting coordinator notified me of that. And then the next thing we did was look at DUCY to see, because this is the time of year DUCY sends several payments. They don't just send one. They typically send four or five towards the end of June. So we looked at that, saw that our ECSE payment was about 1.1 million dollars short. So I emailed, and I thought, well, maybe they're just gonna send the rest either tomorrow or Monday, still before the end of the fiscal year. Because sometimes they do that, they split up the payments. And that's when we learned that, no, they didn't have the money. The reason that they gave was they estimate those expenses based on last year's final numbers and this year's final numbers. And this is for the state, not just Lee Summit. Everybody that has an early childhood special education program was prorated on their June payment in the state of Missouri. It's not just Lee Summit. But they didn't have enough money. So in July, we were supposed to get the remainder of that. The other thing that I would add to what Dr. Buck said that is a negative, but long-term, should also work itself out and be a positive, is we're actually about $4 million short this year in our local property tax collection and Fund 10. Now, we have moved some other revenues, particularly from merchants and manufacturing, some from pilots, to mitigate that. So we're not seeing the full impact of that, but it has come at the expense of our debt service fund as well as our capital projects fund. That's another piece of revenue that, over time, we should recoup back. But to say that, you know, the last two years have been a challenge would be an understatement. They really have. When you have normally extremely dependable streams of revenue that we count on. And you all know that we are over two-thirds locally funded from, and not all of that, but the majority of that comes from our local assessed valuations. So to not receive that, not over not just one year, but two years, is tough. And then, you compound that with the news from the state on some of the federal programs and even the ECSE state program. It makes for a challenging time as we finish the fiscal year and also, you know, budget for the next fiscal year. But what I'll present tonight are really two things. One is the final budget amendment for '24-'25. The second item is the '25-'26 budget, the preliminary budget. And so you'll have two action items in the regular meeting under the finance section where you will approve both those things. So let's start with the '24-'25 budget amendment. In Missouri, you're actually legally required to amend for actual expenses. Revenues, it's fine if they don't come in as much as you thought or if they come over what you budgeted. But for expenses, the budgetary authority, they want there to be enough budget that actual expenses do not exceed that. These are projected through June 30th. We try to estimate these a little high, but that can be a challenge, particularly with, you know, expansion of summer school, curriculum trainings, things that come in. They happen in June. They all happen in June. So, as we look at this, I feel really good about where we're at with Fund 10, Fund 20 are restricted, which you'll see a little bit later. I think we'll be a little bit higher. I think, big picture, it will be fine. The good news is, if you get to July and you feel like there is amendment required, you can do that. You can amend to actual later on in the fiscal year. It doesn't even have to be in July, technically. The revenues projected through June 30th, we will still receive, we didn't expect to receive the 1.8 yesterday, but we'll still receive some money from the county tomorrow. We'll have end-of-year interest. We're anticipating head start reimbursement, and then there's just other revenue streams that will come in. But it's significant, what we will receive that we haven't received yet, either tomorrow or Monday. So, definitely six figures, and it could approach a million dollars. Just a reminder, fund balances are unaudited at this time, even when we present in July. You know, it's never final until the auditor comes in in September and looks at it. You know, as I always say, we're very confident about the total amount of dollars expended, right? But sometimes the auditor will say, no, really, that belonged in the general fund as opposed to special revenue fund or capital projects. And so sometimes slight adjustments can be made between the funds. But there should never be an adjustment made on your total expenses or your total revenues. We haven't had that happen, and I don't anticipate that it will. So revenue changes. Some important points here. All of the things that Dr. Buck described are not reflected. Not all of them are reflected in this revenue. As we go through this, you know, we get to a point where we submit this, and then we learn things. Revenue is not an area where we need to adjust, right? I mean, once we get to the point where we're comfortable with where it is, then it's okay to leave it there. We're not going to be penalized because we come up a little short. But if you look at the adjustments that I made, you will see, I did make a negative adjustment in the incidental fund of 1.3 million. I made a positive adjustment in the special revenue teachers' fund because I thought we were looking pretty good. Thought we anticipated 200,000 more. I thought we're gonna get all of our ECSE reimbursement, which when I amended, amended in April, I was calculating that out to be just a little bit higher than I initially had because we had approval in April. So I thought that was pretty good. And really, I was worried about the 162.8 million in the incidental fund. I was worried about not reaching that. Well, that has flipped. I actually think, well, I'm comfortable saying we will be higher than the 162.8 million, but we'll be lower than 107.5. The 1.1 million that Dr. Buck mentioned from ECSE as well as the title revenue, Title I revenue that Dr. Buck mentioned, the large majority of that is in the teachers' fund for that revenue. So that's where we will fall short. So overall, again, we'll be a little bit higher in incidental. We'll be lower in the teachers. Across the rest of the funds, really not a lot of change. Capital projects, well, there's one big change, but there's a reason for that. Capital projects, just very small. It's actually gonna go up a little bit. We'll exceed that, just ever so slightly. Debt service, I lowered that a little bit. Again, part of that is just tax collection not coming in as we anticipated. Part of it is, I'm very comfortable with our debt service fund balance. We had the flexibility to move that into incidental where we needed it, so that's what we did. Restricted funds, a little bit higher. That number, looking at that today, the 14.15, I think that's very close to where we'll end up, possibly a little bit higher. Bond fund, huge increase. Well, that's because we sold the bonds, and we did receive it in this fiscal year. So, that is why there's such a large influx of money in the bond. I'll remind you that, in the eyes of the state, bond funds and capital project funds are all capital funds. Bond is considered restricted in terms of the ending balance that you have, but it all reports on the annual school board report as Fund IV, capital expenses. So overall, you know, all of our funds increased a little variance, and then, of course, the bond fund throws that off quite a bit. So expenses. So the budget that you see there was approved in April. So and actually, approved in April means we, you know, we put it together in March. And you'll notice that our incidental fund expenses, we did increase those. That was really a combination. Salaries and benefits is where I put a lot of that. Part of that's due to summer school, ESY. We have a robust enrollment in summer school. That's good. The revenue will follow next year from the state, but we have to expend that money. Most of it gets expended in FY '25. Had some other supply, purchase services that came through. I'm high there, but I'm high to try to, you know, to make sure that we had enough cushion. Teachers' fund expenses increasing 650 is almost exclusively due to subs. We did a lot of training, a lot of curriculum work this year that we had planned for, but in March, when we amended that budget, we were behind with the billing from Kelly Services, not because of Kelly, but because we were trying to make sure that we had a lot of our federal program expenditures coded correctly before we paid those bills. Because if you, if you pay them and they're not coded correctly, then you have to go back and do a journal entry and correct things. And it's just, we'd rather get it, try to get it right on the front end the first time so you don't have to spend time correcting it on the back end. So that is almost exclusively due to purchase services. Remember that we contract our sub-services with Kelly Services. That's a, that's a purchase service expense. It's not a, we pay them, and they pay our subs. So that's contracted service. Capital projects is lowered, that's simply because of the bond transfer, okay? We knew that we had bond expenses, you know, when we approved the budget in April, we talked about, now, this is as if the bond issue didn't pass. Of course, by the time we had the bond, the board meeting, we knew it had passed, but we couldn't make that assumption with the budget. And so that's lower just to reflect what will be actual expenses coming out of there. Debt service fund, no change. Restricted went up a little bit. Restricted is, can be a moving target. Our activity expenses went up about 150,000 more than we had originally budgeted. Revenues correspondingly went up. Right now, there's a $16,000 delta between those two out of 3.8 million dollars in expenses and revenue. So we're pretty close there. By the end of the month, it's probably gonna come close to evening out. Nutrition services expenses, you know, and it tracks. Larger summer school, more employees, more food. They're gonna be an increase in expenses there in our restricted. Just a reminder, and you see this on the budget, but in restricted funds, or I'm sorry, you see this in our reporting monthly in our you see this in our reporting monthly in our finance committee, our nutrition services, before and after-school care, the foundation, which is a break-even, and then our activity funds, which are district-wide throughout all of our buildings. Bond fund, went ahead and budgeted twelve million in there. Will hit, looks like about eight, eight and a half million in bond expenditures. So we have a little cushion there. That is good, too, because it's nice to have a little cushion. One of the unique things, by us splitting out our nutrition services, as well as our activities, are sometimes there are capital expenses that come from those funds. And so on our balance sheet, those are reflected in those funds. But when they actually hit, they'll be capital expenses. So we've got a little flexibility there, both in the capital projects fund and plenty of room for the bond expenses that we will incur. So, all that is really reflected here. All those expenses, if you go back and look at that prior page, you'll see incidental, teacher fund, capital projects, debt service, restricted, bond, all of those are reflected. Twenty-six point oh nine. I don't think we're gonna reach twenty-six point oh nine. I'd like to say that we would, but with the hits that we've taken the last ten days, I anticipate it'll be a little bit lower than that. Now, there are some things that could change that. There's still some variables, variables in terms of revenue that could potentially come in. You just don't know when Jackson County will release a large amount of those appealed funds. I know that there has been some hope amongst my colleagues around the area that they would try to do that, because we're all in the same boat with the local revenue, that they would try to do that before the end of the fiscal year. But we'll see what happens. It's a bad news, good news scenario, because even though all of the revenue shortfalls are not reflected here, the revenue increases that we will receive as a result in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget are also not reflected. Now, it's unfortunate because it creates variance. And, you know, when you're comparing year over year, that's not really accurate. But, you know, we have to play the cards that were dealt in terms of the revenue that we receive from. And then this is all three levels. This is federal, state, and local.
Nathan, on this, your last amendment, we were twenty, a little over twenty-seven percent. And if we had not had the last eight days, we would be over twenty-seven percent reserves, correct?
Yeah. Yep, definitely. All right. Dr. Buck kind of covered this. I go a little bit further back, though. Just a reminder, you know, we do have a CSIP goal of twenty-five percent. It was twenty percent, and we made that decision a couple of years ago, that twenty-five was a good number. We wanted to be in a strong financial position in case of tough times. And guess what? We're experiencing some tough times. So I think it is a good goal to keep. And, you know, if there is an overarching theme with everything that's going on here, our district finances are not in any danger. We're in good shape. And we have the ability to rebound from anything really that's thrown at us. So overall, we'll be fine. Even if we finish a little bit below twenty-six, next year, we'll be okay. We have the ability to adjust if we need to. And you can see, going back to oh-nine-ten, you know, there was a time when we were actually below twenty percent. Now, that was a great recession, right? I mean, there's some reasons behind that, and then we built it back up. All right, let's talk FY twenty-six, the preliminary budget. This is a challenge. As much as FY twenty-five is a challenge, as we end the year, FY twenty-six is a challenge, because there's still just so much uncertainty. So what is in this budget? What makes up our revenue budget? Well, when we look at our assessed value, I look at a slight increase. This is a reassessment year. Normally, it would be more than slight. But CPI was only two point nine percent. That's the Consumer Price Index. That's what we are limited to in growth in Missouri. You get the CPI, plus you get any new construction and improvements. So it was never going to be a windfall, all right, with a reassessment year. It isn't. And sometimes that's a misnomer that's out there, is, you know, property values go up. Obviously, we've experienced that the last two years, and everything that has happened around that. But districts don't experience a windfall from that, because levies are required to be rolled back. We were in a very unique position, being at the ballot, but again, we felt like it was the right thing to do. Hindsight is twenty-twenty. If I would have known in twenty-twenty-three how much, how long it was going to take to sort this all out, and the shortfalls that we incurred, if I could have predicted that, I never would have recommended taking the prop, you know, the rollback of sixty-five cents, because we were all doing that in good faith, that those assessments were correct, right? And they weren't. They since come back, and there's still a lot of uncertainty. We really don't have any certainty yet, and that's unfortunate. But the bottom line is, that all plays into, you know, we're living with the sixty-five cent rollback right now that was set on inaccurate data. And that's unfortunate, but that's, it is what it is, unfortunately. Prop C is budgeted at fourteen ninety-five. That's slightly down. It was fifteen oh four this year. So nine dollars, that's weighted ADA. So that will be a little bit, that's not too much of a hit to the budget. Now, the state revenue is projected to be up significantly. Legislature passed. The state actually targeted seventy-one forty-five. Still waiting for the governor to, he has until July fifteenth to sign that, or if not, it automatically becomes law. Now, that does not prevent withholdings, all right? And, you know, a lot of us in this room have been around long enough that we remember when there were withholdings, right, from the basic formula. Typically, they like to do it from areas like transportation first, because there are tax decreases that are tied to the funding formula, the basic formula being fully funded. So typically, transportation is first, then any other area before they get to the basic formula. But it could, it still could happen. Hopefully not, and hopefully state revenue stays strong. Federal is down. Dr. Buck's illustrated that with Title I. Now, one of the things with Title I revenue is, we experienced the decrease in our allocation for next year. One of the silver linings, I guess, if you wanna call it that, is that by not receiving that money in FY twenty-five, we should get it in FY twenty-six, so I didn't have to lower the overall Title I revenue allocation, because between what our current allocation is for FY twenty-six, what our carryover that we anticipate having, and then the revenue that we'll receive that we didn't receive this month, that should stay pretty level. Federal revenues are a very small source of our revenue, even smaller now. But, you know, actually, our biggest source of federal revenue, but it doesn't come from the U.S. Department of Education, is nutrition services. We receive a large amount for reimbursements for any student that is a free lunch or reduced lunch. There's a much higher reimbursement. So actually, the highest amount of revenue that we receive comes through the USDA. It gets passed through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in Jefferson City, but it's actually a federal funding source. Special education is next, Part B. We have close to, a little under four million dollars in revenue from that. And then our title programs, more commonly known as ESEA, are the third-largest source. Because there's more than just Title I. As Dr. Buck mentioned, there's Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title I-D. And just a reminder that there is no ESER funding. You know, for several years, we had that. That's done for next year. Those percentages, when they, we merged our slide presentation, they didn't all come out exactly, but the exact percentages on that graph are sixty-six point four eight local, one point four eight county, twenty-eight point two eight state, and then three point seven six. And federal didn't even show up on that, but federal is three point seven six. Even before ESER, we were closer to four and a half or five percent federal. And then ESER kind of made sure that we stayed at that level and even a little higher. That's pretty typical. Local, and that is, just a reminder there, that twenty-eight point two eight state, that is even with the projection of the basic formula increasing, the state actually targets. So we are still a district that, you know, is heavily dependent upon local revenue. And with the exception of Prop C, which is a statewide sales tax that the state expects us to code as local, all the rest of it is truly local revenue, coming in from personal property, real estate, commercial, and ag. All right, expenditure budget. What you see there is salary schedule increases, and those are average increases. Always remember that those are, and those come from the March board meeting agenda. Those are snapshots in time, right? They're gonna be close, but they can vary a little bit. The teacher schedule went three point four two percent. I will say, the support, professional, and administrative schedule received the exact same percent increase. But what happens in the support area, we had a couple ranges that we adjusted for employees. And so that is why you see the three point two eight, all right? The difference between professional and administrative, the three point oh seven and the three point eleven, obviously very close. But that has to do with, after step eighteen on both of those schedules, because it's the exact same percentage between steps, but after step eighteen, you go to a half step, or, sorry, half of the normal percentage. So what that really indicates is there are more on the professional schedule that are off-schedule, and it could just be one or two people that impact that overall percentage. That's why it's not exactly equal. Insurance, I budgeted two percent. I will note, that's two percent on the entire year. We went ahead and bumped it all up two percent. In actuality, if we decided to increase health insurance, board paid, sorry, board-paid contributions, it would only take effect for half the year, because our insurance is a calendar year. So January one, two thousand twenty-six forward. We're actually locked in through December with our current rates. So that is definitely an area where I was a little bit conservative. Right now, health insurance is running pretty good. We've had a couple months that were okay. We haven't had a really bad month. We had one really good month. But we still have really seven more months to go, to see where we end up. But hopeful for less. I really am hopeful that it's possible to possibly keep those board-paid contributions flat or else go up a small amount. Retirement stays the same. That's good. Just so, you know, retirement contributions in the state of Missouri, those are significant expenses. That fourteen point five percent is on certified, six point eight six is on non-certified, but then you have Social Security on top of that, so it ends up being just a little bit under fourteen and a half. Those have stayed the same for several years. That's a very good thing. But those are a fairly significant part of our budget when you look at overall salaries and benefits, those retirement contributions. Now, they're also significant for our employees, because the employees also contribute that amount to the state, whether they're in PSRS or peers. So, you know, the reward is obviously at the end of the career, but those are not insignificant expenses either way. You'll notice that next year, the transfer to capital is only two million dollars. The main reason for that is, we have the ability to lower that this year, and we feel like we can be flexible and do that. We have a lot of expenses that are bond expenses. We also have a little over two million dollars, actually about two point four million dollars, between a new system in transportation, but the majority is a little over two million dollars for the purchase service, for early childhood, special education, transportation. That is an expense that we will incur next year, but not be reimbursed until the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So that is really a one-time hit to our budget that we're also absorbing in this fiscal year. So I try, I'm sorry, in the next fiscal year. So tried to mitigate that a little bit as well with that transfer. Now, what you will see is, on the slide after this, is we are still in good shape, capital projects fund, and we're gonna continue to build that balance. So it's not as if we're deficit spending in capital projects. This slide is a little bit out of whack, and again, I apologize for the translation of merging these. On expenses, this is skewed a little bit because of bond expenses. You know, we don't always have such heavy bond expenses. So if you just look at operating, we are expending eighty-two percent of our operating budget on salaries and benefits, okay? So the fifty-seven percent, yes, that's reflected of our total overall expenses. But within just Fund One and Fund Two, operating, we're looking at eighty-two percent. Next slide is our debt service schedule. That is with, you see the Series two thousand twenty-five A, so that has been included. You'll notice I budgeted quite a bit higher in debt service. That's just for flexibility purposes. We may not need to spend that much, and likely probably won't. But I just wanted us to have that flexibility as we reissue in two thousand. It will be in FY twenty-six, likely, probably in March, around that timeframe. I wanted us to have flexibility if we needed it. Again, likely, we won't, but it's in the budget. Debt service, again, remains really an area of strength. It allows us to continue to do projects, and in a district this size, all the buildings that we have, all the parking lots, all the roofs, there's a lot to maintain. And so that strong debt service really allows us to do that. And you all will get to see the benefit of that over the next few years, as we spend those bond dollars. All right, here's the budget. I just wanna point out some big-picture items here. You know, you'll notice that our overall fund balance, if you just look at the percentage, it goes down a little bit. And if you focus on the box at the top, the yellow box, then the, on the left side of the page, and then the yellow shaded area at the bottom left, you'll notice it goes down point three four percent, which is odd, but there's a couple reasons for that. Both are important, I think, as we look forward. Fund balance, though, goes up two point four eight million, all right? We're adding almost two and a half million dollars to our bottom line. There's two reasons for this, though, that the percentage goes down. Number one, you know, again, we were fortunate to be able to give salary enhancements, to be able to add some positions. That expense, along with two million dollars, right? That expense, along with two million dollars, right, of the one-time expense that we will get reimbursed for, when you increase your expenses, the revenue has to be fairly significant for your percentage to hold, okay? The other factor, which is a large factor, is if you look at our restricted budget, fourteen point two six million in revenue, fifteen, just a little over fifteen million in expenses. That impacts our ASBR. And so I always try to reflect that percentage. If I didn't, it would show that percentage going up, but then when you get the ASBR, you can see that that percentage is down lower than what I projected. So I always try to err a little bit low with my ASBR projection, but within that restricted, nutrition services is an area that we'll have to focus on, I think, with revenues versus expenses. It is, you know, there was a period of time during COVID where the reimbursements were extremely high, because everybody was reimbursed at that free or reduced rate. We are now out of that period, and so we're in an era where, obviously, food's gone up, we've all experienced that in our personal lives. East Trails Middle School, you know, was added. It's a middle school kitchen, which is not a small kitchen, but, you know, obviously enrollment was stable during that time period. So there are some headwinds that nutrition services is facing, and so we just need, I think, to help, you know, figure out that process and going forward, because we don't want to be in a situation where year over year, you know, it's a deficit, because that will impact our overall operating. So it can be done, certainly, but that is part of the reason, if you see under restricted, eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars reflected, I'm pulling that over into that ending ASBR balance. And so that's why it's reflected as being lower. That being said, if all this happens exactly as I projected it, it would be twenty-five point seven pop, if all those things came in. You'll see seventy-five million in bond expenditures. I would be thrilled if we spent seventy-five million dollars next year, so would Dr. Shelton. Hopefully we can. That means our projects will be going well, we'd be moving along, and we'd get a lot done in the next twelve months. That's budgeted high, in all reality, probably, but that's okay, to have that flexibility. All right. That's all I have. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
So I have a, I guess I have a logistic question before I ask any questions. We've got five minutes left in the session, and I know we've got another agenda item. Should we hold our questions till later, or can I start asking questions? Okay, we're good. Okay, got a few questions. So for the delayed funding that we're going to receive, that we should have received in twenty-four, twenty-five, and we're going to receive in twenty-five, twenty-six, will that be asterisked or denoted some way next year, or, I mean, next fiscal year? Or, I mean, is it going to show up in that budget? And how do we, how do we highlight that? Because like you said, it's going to, it's going to create variation.
It will be, I mean, we, it can be presented in any fashion in the budget that we present, you know, ultimately. I forgot to mention, too, there's a large document that's, you know, a lot required by the state, that's been uploaded. That is, you know, also part of the budget that's approved. But typically, what the board sees, and what we want to communicate, is we try to, you know, communicate a condensed version that hopefully makes sense to everybody. Where you will see that is when budget amendments come through next year, you will absolutely see that reflected in the budget. And so part of the reason was timing, because, I mean, you know, I was in a place where, you know, I needed to get this posted, and some of this happened after this had already been submitted and uploaded into Board Docs. But part of the reason is also, it's okay, and I wasn't worried about it, because really, to your point, it does need to be reflected next year as it's received, and so when you make that budget amendment, then the revenue can be reflected to show it.
Okay, thanks. And the one point eight million that we're getting in the pilots, the pilots fund that came in, does that go into Fund One, or the operation?
Yes, I put it in Fund One.
Okay.
It can be split amongst your levy, but yes, it was placed in Fund One.
Okay. And the IDEA Part B that was delayed, is that federal or state?
So it is federal, but it comes through the state. So the federal government sends it to state and has every single state, be it a fiscal agent, to divvy it out.
Okay. And, and do we have an estimate? You said that the Title II A and III EL, and there was another three. Do we have a ballpark of what we were originally asking for?
Last, well, we don't ask, they actually just give it to you, all right? Last year was over six hundred thousand for Title II, that's the second biggest tranche of Title. Title III, I don't have off the top of my head. But they're much, much, much smaller.
Yeah, typically Title IV is around one hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred thousand. Dr. Barker, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And I, but I know Title III comes in two forms, EL and immigrant, and those are typically around forty thousand dollars each.
Okay, all right, thanks. And, so, for the Title I A that is being reduced, I have several questions on that. Why, so why, what's the thought process behind recoding and freezing what was planned for Underwood and things like that?
So we have a million and a half that was going to be coded as federal programs resource, as the funding source. We have to now turn in a budget plan with a significant less, and we have to tie FTEs to that, where there's a second page on our supporting document. We have to actually say who it is. So that means all those people who are not, you know, we had to move into local funding, we have to code them as local and local funding, and no longer can we code them as federal programs, because we don't have the money. Our dollars are attached to people when we send them smid or budget.
Okay, I guess my thinking on that, and I think you just answered my question, but my thinking on that was, if we start to recode people and not do actions that we were going to do, is it going to look like we don't need the funding? That's my concern. I, you see what I mean?
That's not, that's not how this particular budget works. It literally is, they decide how much they're going to give Title I nationwide, then they have the formula, and it's prorated by what states' poverty's are. Missouri lost twelve and a half million, and then Missouri has to use the same formula to divvy it out to districts. So it is not a needs base, it's not a competitive grant, it literally is just an allocation.
And so what actions can the board take to advocate for those funds, that calculation to change?
So I'm going to DC in two weeks, and we just had a conversation today about this with the person leading the group. That's in ESEA language, which Replaced No Child Left Behind. We're a little afraid of asking our current federal government to address that, because we're afraid they'll make ESEA worse by the current focus on education out of the federal government. So I don't know if I would advocate for a change in that formula at this time, although it needs to be changed. I'm afraid you'll see a big charter expansion push and a redone ESEA, and I don't know if, that doesn't help us, that diverts funds from us to charter schools.
All right, because that formula's at the federal level, right?
Yes, it's in the education, ESEA, somebody help me remember, it's been too long since it passed, but it's the Act that Replaced No Child Left Behind, Every Child Succeeds Act, thank you. It's, and it's in, it starts at about page eighty-four, and goes into the nineties, if you want to look it up, it's section eleven twenty-four and eleven twenty-five that describes the formula. And then you can go on to census page, which I had a screenshot up there, I have it up right here. It'll go through what's in that formula, but you can't see the data for a lot of it, because, like I said, tax returns are part of it, and they won't share that data with us.
And I'd imagine the other forty-nine states are impacted equally to Missouri?
No, some are positive. So Missouri lost twelve and a half million. What we are told is the, there's flat funding for Title I nationwide, so if we lost twelve and a half million, that went to another state. And that happens every year, as some states' poverty rates increase faster, or maybe even go down, there's always a reallocation state to state. Usually, if you look in our history, a hundred thousand dollar swing was a big swing before. So seeing an eight hundred thousand dollar swing for us is unprecedented, and pretty volatile, it's hard to plan for that.
And it, I can't remember which of you mentioned a two-year recovery from that? Can you, does it have to do with the formula?
My prediction, just looking at a free reduced lunch rate going up twenty percent over the last two years, remember, that number they're basing on's twenty-three, and it's not based on free reduced lunch way, way back when free reduced lunch was part of it, twenty-two years ago or something like that. But seeing our poverty impact from our measures that we do get to see, it's gone up twenty percent in the last two years, two years from now, I assume their poverty numbers are going to increase by a similar rate, at least that's the hope. So I don't expect to see much change in FY twenty-seven, I would expect to see a big change for FY twenty-eight, if that correlation does hold.
I think, I think you answered all my questions, but I'm not sure. Oh, I had one other question, and this kind of ties into some agenda items that we have coming up at the seven PM meeting. So the employee salary and benefit increases you showed in the presentation, but I noticed in the seven PM agenda that the Kelly Services, the purchase services increase was significantly lower. Is there a logic behind that, an argument for or against, you know, why they weren't about the same?
Dr. Carlson, do you want to answer that question? She's asking why the rate was not a three point four two percent increase for Kelly Services, like teachers. Typically, some of it does not take on subrates. Basically, Dr. Carlson works with Kelly Services, and they look at fill rates, and they see if our rates are working, so we have a high fill rate, and if it's not, we need to increase it.
Yeah, so I'm going to give a bit of history. So for a lot of years, for about ten years, we held our sub pay rate the same, at a hundred dollars flat, all the way up until COVID and shortly thereafter. At that time, we found we were behind market and struggling with fill rates, and decided at that time to go from one hundred dollars a day to one hundred fifteen dollars per day for our Kelly subs, for our substitute teachers. At that time, that was a, that was a big shift in the budget, going fifteen percent higher than where we were. So at that time, Nathan Holder, we discussed, you know, maybe wait, because our fill rates have been strong, but waiting until our fill rates dipped to then make a big move to the market and our competitors, we probably wanted to be a little more proactive than that. So we decided to start making increases with the market, and this small increase we're looking at making for tonight puts us in the middle of the market for sub fills, subs. Our sub fill rate has been very strong, because subs just like coming to our schools. We have great kids, great schools, great teachers, and everything that we move to subs, that takes more away from what we can do for our teachers. So we're just mindful of that balancing act as we move forward and move through.
Kelly Services services many of the districts in the region, and I think we have the highest fill rate of any of the districts. Even though we're in the middle of the pack in pay, we're the highest fill rate. Subs like subbing for us, and like being in our buildings with our kids.
And I would find that line item in the budget under instructional purchase services? Is that right?
It would be a purchase service.
Okay, because I, when I was looking through the book, the fifty-five page book, I did see the only thing that looked large enough was that line item, is that correct? That, like, it was like eight million? I don't remember, I don't have the book up, so.
There are other things that would reflect that under purchase services, but if you really, the, the area that, under the Teachers Fund, or Fund Two, if you look at contracted services or purchase services, those expenses are not exclusive, but almost exclusively to Kelly. And so there's a couple factors related to that line item, and it was actually able to be lowered a little bit this year.
I saw that.
Primarily due to, we had a huge amount of work that was done with our staff, teaching staff across the district, that required subs for them to come in and do curricular work, training. The other item there is building subs, and we took a look at their utilization and trying to be as efficient as possible in that area, and so we feel comfortable that that number can come down a little bit from where it's ending up this year.
Our first eleven months, we spent four point four million in subs, and that's a two point two percent increase over the first eleven months out of twelve the previous year. So we spent four point three million total last year, we were four point four million at the end of May. I didn't know that June, we have summer school, but you still have payments coming in from what we did in May, so there will be an increase, but it looks like it's on track to be about a two percent increase, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for answering my questions.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, back to the Title I A funds, you said if the allocation doesn't come, we'll go back in PD, but also that there will be a hiring freeze, so like...
So we have it fully staffed, so it's not like we have openings now, we're not going to hire. If someone left mid-year, we would look at attrition and not replace that person.
But is that only in terms of title schools?
The folks who, it's not just school buildings, because remember, we have Title I class in early childhood, and we also have home educators, they're like PAT, in fact, they kind of do the similar thing. It would be any employee within those funding codes, yes.
Okay, so like with Underwood hitting?
We're not, and that's another thing, I should have said that. We were wanting to expand to Underwood, because they were at forty percent in September. The official count, they end up being thirty-nine point six percent. We thought they were going to be forty percent, pretty close. We are now not expanding into Underwood because of this loss of funding.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Holder. Well, you will present to us a little bit in the seven o'clock meeting, is that correct? Proposed budget? Or is this your last hurrah at that microphone?
Really, I don't, but I'm happy to do whatever you would like.
Well, no, I just want to personally thank you. As a, as a former staff member, as a community member, as a board member, you came into a difficult situation, and your calm confidence, you've done a great job, and I know you're going on to bigger and better things, but I just wanted to thank you and let you know that we all up here have appreciated your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
He was told he has to work hard these last two days left. That's his legacy, is how hard he works Friday and Monday. Dr. Carlson, I think we're going to get upstairs, and then, unless you think you can do this in one minute or so.
I can do it in a minute.
All right.
So the next item is two board policies, ADF and JECA. These two policies are, have been to SLT, they've been through Board Policy Committee, and they're here for your review, and then we'll go on to the future board meetings. Two small changes, District Wellness Program eligibility to enroll. Happy to answer any questions, or if they're specific to the functions of the policies, I know Dr. Barker and Dr. Wilson are available to go deeper if needed.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson. All right, I think we've got to get upstairs. Thank you.